I've been here too long.
I'd like to call it tonight, some of the planning board meeting to order. Anna, please call the roll.
Ron LeJulier.
Here.
Jason Berry.
Here.
Jeremy Rhodes.
Here.
Chris Horton.
Here.
Mark Richardson.
Here.
David Witham.
Here.
First item, referral minutes to the meeting of September 18, 2024. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Horton, seconded by Mr. Rhodes. Discussion. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Close? Abstain? Next item is committee reports. You have the land use board reports, the summary. Is there any comment on those? Seeing none, we'll move on to city council report. Mr. Witham.
No report tonight.
Next, we move on to Stratford Regional Planning Commission, SRPC. Update. Mr. Richardson.
No report tonight, but we're having our presentation, so.
Thank you. Eyes on 30, 2030 Committee. Mr. Berry.
No report, Mr. Chair.
Community Power Coalition. Mr. Horton.
The committee has sunset, so I will have no further reports on community power.
Great, thank you. Housing Committee. Mr. Horton.
Mayor Housing Committee tonight at 5, prior to this meeting. We worked on our goals that we want to focus on, and what phases those fall into. And then additionally, as you folks know, we talked about ADO just after, so. That's all I got.
Hey, thank you. Next item, item three, Natural Resources and Land Use Master Plan Chapters. Presentation by Stratford Regional Planning Commission. Director Mears, anything to add?
No, we have the folks from Stratford Regional Planning Commission here. They've been working on the Natural Resources and Land Use Chapter, and they're just going to give an overview of what they've worked on.
Thank you, Michelle. We don't have a PowerPoint, but we figured we could pull it up if we, you know, if it benefits everybody to be able to see it.
And we have X for five.
So while he's putting up the computer, you want to get your computer in? Hi, my name's Lisa Murphy, and I've been here a few times, so you all look familiar to me, and I'm sure I look familiar to you. With me tonight is Mike Polazati.
You got it.
He's one of our newer members, and I haven't had to pronounce his name yet, so. He's going to be giving the first part of this presentation, and that is on the Land Use Chapter. And so if you've... Can we shoot it on the screen?
Maybe our technician can come in and help hook that up right here.
Yeah, let's see.
You can unplug from that. And turn on the projector.
And does anyone need a paper copy?
No, we have them.
All right, well, like Lisa mentioned, my name is Mike Polazati. I am the Economic Development Planner at Stratford Regional Planning Commission, and I am the lead author for the Land Use Chapter for the city of Somersworth. I will just say, if folks have feedback as we kind of walk through this draft chapter, I think it's fine if you all just chime in, or, you know, if you have feedback, too, that's a little bit more substantive. I can give everyone, like, my contact information and my business card, and you can email our way, too, as we continue working through this draft. But just to provide a little overview of the chapter and a structure of it, so we structured this chapter to have a intro, an overview of the community engagement efforts throughout the city over the past couple of months for both land use and natural resources. And then specifically for the Land Use Chapter, four themes kind of percolated to the top after all of these discussions we had with municipal leadership, with board members and committee members, and then also members of the public. So those four themes are listed there on the screen. There's sustainable and smart growth, equitable and inclusive development, access and connectivity, and infrastructure resilience. And then our fifth theme is really that forward-looking, mapping the future section of the report, where we're highlighting some options for future land use and kind of the vision surrounding that. And all of these themes, like I mentioned, were really developed through this community engagement efforts and all these different activities, so they're really reflective of the priorities that were kind of gathered throughout all the different meetings and sessions that I'll talk about a little bit more. So we have our introduction, then our overview of community engagement. So we developed a pretty comprehensive outreach and engagement plan with city staff in Somersworth to make sure that we were hearing as many voices as possible. So there were four meetings that were held from February 2024 through August 2024 that engaged members of various boards in the city and committees in the city. And then there was also a public community workshop that was held in May 2024 where about a dozen people, members of the public showed up and were able to voice their opinions and workshop different ideas and share kind of what their priorities and visions were surrounding land use for the city of Somersworth. In addition to that, we also worked with the city to disseminate out a citywide survey. So there were social media campaigns surrounding that, email blasts, our newsletter, city publications, and a poster and flyer with a QR code and link that was also sent out in water bills, too. So we tried really hard to make sure that this survey was sent out to as many people as possible, and at the end, we received over 300 responses, which was pretty robust. So we were very, very happy to see that as we were working on developing the different themes and priorities for this chapter. So the next area kind of dives into... I'm on the right page. Existing land use within the city. So this kind of just provides some ground setting and talks about the different land use patterns that currently exist in Somersworth and where they're located throughout the city. So within this section, there are, there's a map of existing land use in the city, and then a brief overview of some different categories of land use, discussing them here, and then also a more cohesive table that really breaks down the current land use story within the city. Again, for that ground setting before we dive into the different themes. So the first theme, like I mentioned, was centered around sustainable and smart growth. So this section really kind of discusses at a higher level the need for balanced and sustainable growth throughout the city and really reflecting the community's priorities to leverage existing density that already exists in the city and existing infrastructure while also ensuring that land that is not developed and may be in conservation or land that could be in conservation is preserved. So some of the data that's presented in this section includes some items from the citywide survey, as shown up on the screen, where a significant majority of respondents highlighted that their preference for future development within the city is in areas that are already developed and kind of densifying the places that already have density and infrastructure throughout the city. The second theme, which is equitable and inclusive development, and this section really centers around fostering a community where all residents have access to opportunities, to different resources they need, and ensuring that they can access all the different assets that the city has to offer and the region has to offer. This includes also being mindful about ensuring that there's a big range of housing types within the city and affordability as well, so that folks can afford to live here. And then the data presented in this section kind of centers around a couple of different topics, one of them being urban heat islands to highlight priorities that were raised throughout community engagement about preserving green spaces within the city, and also street trees and streetscapes, too, that can help make walkability a bit more bearable in certain parts of the city in summer heat, or different things like that. And then the maps are presented, too, in line with the text. The third theme is access and connectivity, and this theme was pretty, pretty much one of the major ones that kind of percolated to the top right away for a lot of folks throughout the survey and the community engagement efforts. But this really centers around the community's priorities for land use patterns that really bolster walkability, cycling infrastructure, safety and accessibility on sidewalks and in crosswalks, and also ensuring that the community as a whole is very, very well-connected. So there's also discussions about the desire for expanded transit access through coast and different expanded routes throughout the city. And some of the data presented in this section includes a couple of different analyses that SRPC conducted. One of them is our Pathways to Play, which Somersworth was the pilot for that a few years ago. That highlights a significant portion of residents within the city, actually the highest portion of residents in Somersworth compared to all of our other communities in the SRPC region, live within half a mile of a recreation asset. So that kind of highlights the need and kind of the ease of improving walkability and connectivity throughout the city to make sure that folks can access those different recreation resources. Some of the other data presented in this section, just to scroll through, is also our bicycle level of stress, traffic stress analysis, which highlights different areas throughout the city where cycling may be more challenging, depending on traffic and width of shoulders and accessibility to bike lanes if they exist, and kind of highlighting areas for opportunity and improvements there. And there was some additional feedback, too, that was highlighted in the survey on this table as well. Individuals were asked to rank or to select different activities or different priorities that should be encouraged within Somersworth. And the tallest bar here was promoting safe places to walk throughout the community. So most respondents selected that, hence it being the highest bar up on that table. So it was identified as a priority for respondents to the survey through some of those community engagement efforts. The fourth theme centers around infrastructure resilience, and this takes on infrastructure resilience from a couple of different angles. So there's that traditional kind of resilience to, you know, storms or climate-related things that may happen, but also resilience to things like economic shocks as well. And we were able to slot this in with infrastructure resilience due to some of the themes that were lifted throughout the chapter through the community engagement efforts surrounding densifying certain areas and also the desire for mixed use in certain areas. So some of the discussion throughout this section of the chapter has to do with how mixed-use areas are more resilient to economic shocks and economic challenges. And then some of the other things presented throughout this section have to do with stormwater management and watersheds and the impacts that, you know, improperly managed stormwater can have on different natural resources throughout the city and the different waterways throughout the city. So highlighting priorities there surrounding improvements to stormwater management is a big piece of this section as well. And some of the other data that's presented throughout this section of the chapter also has to do with traffic volumes, and that ties back to some of that mixed-use development and density as well to try to reduce car trips within the city, local car trips within the city by densifying certain areas and creating more mixed-use development. And then, like I said, we also share some other maps here as well about impervious surfaces and stormwater runoff and have a discussion there about, you know, different forward-looking priorities for the city there. And then the fifth section, which we call Theme Five, Mapping Our Future. This section really highlights several things, including the constraints to development within the city, which are some of the wetlands and the conserved areas. And it also includes several of the build-out analyses that SRPC has done in the past surrounding the housing chapter that was recently adopted and some other more regional analyses as well. So within this section, there are discussions and data that are presented about the number of build-able lots within the city, where those are located, and kind of the limits surrounding development and expansion of housing and business and different areas like that. Within this section, we also highlight some of the future land use goals and also the future land use map and analysis at the very end of the chapter with the last map. And this was developed through the community engagement efforts, so listening to the feedback there, some of our build-out analysis as well, and highlighting areas that have existing infrastructure and existing density as opportunities for the future for different types of density, and then also different areas for expanded conservation efforts as well throughout the city.
I did see on one of your matrices back a bit ago, developed land at almost 50%. How does that compare to other communities? It seems steep, but...
Yeah, so I don't have the answer to that right now, but I could get it for you. I do know that Somersworth, based on some of the analyses in the housing chapter from a couple of months ago, under current zoning and based on the current number of existing build-able lots, is that build-out will happen very quickly in the city. And Somersworth is unique as it's one of the smallest communities land-wise.
Which speaks to some of the survey results to enhance density in already populated areas, so.
Yes, yes.
They kind of work hand in glove, if you will.
Yes, and folks, I hope that this came through through my presentation, but folks throughout the community engagement were very, very conscious about balancing that need for development and also conserving existing green spaces and making sure that the city doesn't become just one big development, but making sure that natural resources and natural assets are definitely conserved. And then the final part of the chapter, after all of the maps and all of the tables, is a matrix or a table of the thematic goals broken down, and then all of the specific actions to meet these goals within these thematic areas that are talked about throughout the narrative of the different sections of the chapter, but they're just broken out here very clearly so that folks can see those. And these actions within each goal are ranked with the highest feasibility and highest impact being the ones at the top, and then going down from there. And those rankings came from an action ranking survey that we sent to the planning board members to be able to share their opinions on what they felt was the most impactful and most feasible. So that's how all of these are ordered. And this chapter, and we also share a couple of resources and sources down below, but this chapter, we were able to include all of the tables and maps in line with the text to keep the narrative going, so we don't have a big appendix at the end, but we're able to have everything within, within that narrative so folks can see it as they're reading. So I'm happy to try to answer any questions individuals may have or take any feedback and take notes down, but if folks kind of have more substantive feedback or they need to look at the document a little bit more, I'm happy to give folks my business card, and we can have a conversation over the phone or chat over email, and we can try to incorporate any edits we have.
Any questions in the board?
So if I'm hearing you correctly, this is still somewhat in draft form?
Yes, this is still a draft, so.
It would be helpful. I appreciate having the hard copy, but could it be made electronically to us as a PDF, just in an email or something like that? That would be great.
Mr. Richardson.
It was, Dave. Yeah, it was, it was, I believe it was on the reminder of the tonight's meeting down there. So you can look at it there. Just look back and you'll see it. Are you going over the natural resource plan, too?
So I will pass it off to the...
I just want to say, before you get started, I'm glad that this got a chapter of its own. But I'll let you start then before I comment.
Okay, thanks. All right. Yes, thank you for that good introduction, Mark. So similar to the housing chapter and the land use chapter, we kept the theme idea going. And... Do you want to work this while I... Thanks. So the four themes for the natural resources were sustainable and smart growth. Theme two is equitable and inclusive development. Theme three is access and connectivity. And I am reading the wrong line. The intention was I was going to be taking notes because there were going to be lots of comments from everybody, so that's why I had his open. All right, so the four themes are the green spaces, natural amenities, and sustainable development. Theme two is land conservation, trails, and connectivity. Theme three was environmental stewardship and protection, and theme four is education, outreach, and leadership development. So with the natural resource chapter, natural resources are always a very interesting enundrum. We all want them. We all want them to help maintain our rural community, but there's sometimes conflicts with development. So, you know, balancing the natural resource protection with allowing some development is often a challenge in communities. It's, as Mark mentioned, it's nice to have a chapter of its own. It's nice that we went that way. And so this chapter looks at the environmental attributes, topography, soils, water resources, and conservation land, and it helps guide the city in the land use decisions. Theme one, as I mentioned, green spaces, natural amenities, and sustainable development. This first table gives a breakdown of the acreage and the percentage of cities that each of these attributes have. I don't know if there's any questions about those. And then we break down into water resources and surface waters and aquifers, aquifer transmissivity. Most of the town has a very low transmissivity, 64.8%, but you do have some high areas which are around the wells, town well. And a lot of what this chapter includes is mapping. First map is water resources. And also, besides just the water resources, it includes the 100-year and the 500-year flood zone. Here's the aquifer transmissivity that I mentioned. You can see the higher areas are up in the northern portion and also right in the town center. Next, we get to forest and agricultural lands. This chapter, this theme, portion of the theme, talks about farmland soils and soil drainage. Here is a soil drainage table that shows the prime farmland, farmland of statewide importance, very poorly drained soils and poorly drained soils. Next, we have forest land and agricultural land. Map. And just keep going. Farmland soils. Prime farmland and farmland of statewide importance. Then we move on to the soil drainage. Again, mentioned poorly drained and very poorly drained. And that takes us into theme two, which is land conservation, trails, and connectivity. In this theme, we talk about the conservation lands and the importance of land protection through conservation. Also mentioned with this is unfragmented lands. Those are lands that are parcels of lands that are contiguous to each other so that it allows for connectivity. So it allows for wildlife movement and habitation. This map shows the conservation land. As you can see, there's... Conservation land is in the green, and then there's also the coastal conservation plan, conservation focus areas. Those are areas that are regionally beneficial. They move from one town to the other, as you can see the overlap on the maps. So those are important areas that you would benefit, that would benefit several towns if they were conserved. Unfragmented lands, as I mentioned, this is a way to keep long parcels that are dedicated either through conservation or through easements to allow for wildlife passage. Theme three, environmental stewardship and protection. We have the different habitats in the chart right there. This is from the Wildlife Action Plan, and it gives a breakdown of what the town has or the city has per each of the habitats. The chart below that is the highest-ranked habitat in New Hampshire and the highest-ranked habitat in the biological region, and it provides percentage as well. Habitat land types is the next map, and it's a little bit of a busy map, as you can see, and it goes through each of those habitats that I mentioned up above. Habitat tiers. This is the highest-ranked habitat in New Hampshire and the highest-ranked habitat in the biological region. So next, we have the co-occurrence map, which is going to be on the next page. Scroll down to it. All right, so this is a map that was created with different layers to show where the co-occurrence of all of those attributes that I just mentioned that are high-quality. This adds all of the layers together and provides an idea of where the highest concentration of, your highest priorities probably lie in terms of looking for conservation land. The last theme is education, outreach, and leadership development. One of the recurring themes that I hear from town to town is the concern of what's going to happen to the natural resources as we age out. Quite a few communities have said they're losing conservation commission folks, and they want to be able to teach the younger folks all about the local habitat, the local concerns. So that's something that's, you know, going to be a challenge, and hopefully we can find ways to draw additional people in. But you're not alone on that one. Then we go to the natural resource goals and actions. And again, the goals match up with the themes. So the first one is the theme of, the first theme is green spaces, natural amenities, and substantial development. As you can see, goal one fits that very appropriately. Each of the themes, or I'm sorry, each of the goals has several actions, usually three or four actions to help meet that goal, and those are all shown on the right column. So are there any questions? I know that's a quick run-through, but a lot of this is mapping, and I could stand here all night and talk about mapping, but you're not going to get very far with your meeting.
And again, this is in draft form still and was emailed to me that I deleted, so I got to go find it. Thank you. Is it premature to put these up on the website where they're still in draft form, or?
No, we could put them up on the website now. For comments.
Anybody have any comments on either of the... Anybody have any comments on either of the, uh, chapters or questions or concerns?
I'll just comment and say that, um, I think you guys done a great job compiling all the feedback, surveys, information and, and really put it into a form that's easy to, oh, maybe it's a lot of information, but, uh, definitely develop and helping develop those goals and actions to, to, to get to meeting the, the themes that you outlined as well. So I think, again, great job. Um, and, uh, I certainly need more time to read through and, and look over, but, uh, it's a well put together product.
Thank you. Uh, you know, I've been doing planning a lot of years and this has been a great community to work with. Um, the, the input that we got from the different, uh, outreach has been more than what I expected. So, um, you know, it was a joy working in this community, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, thanks very much for all of this. I think in the sessions that I attended, um, certainly, you know, there was lively conversation and you've listened and paid attention and these are the results of those meetings and the surveys and everything else. And I'm glad to hear the number of people that responded to the survey. The thing I have about, um, this whole part of it, the, um, natural resources that we have, the, the number that sticks out in my mind here is that we have thirty-four percent forested land. I would bet that would be a surprise to most people living in Summersworth. Sad to say, probably the most people who know about where the forested lands are and use the forested lands are probably the homeless because there is no public access to that land. And it would be extremely nice to have recreational, passive recreational access to much of the land that is available left here in Summersworth, uh, whether it's for hiking or cross-country skiing or whatever. People wanted bird watching, you know, looking for, uh, different kinds of species of leaves or whatever. I, I, I think it's, it's, to me, it was a surprise that we have that much forested land. And again, as we're going about our daily lives and driving around through the city or walking around through the city, we don't notice it.
Mm-hmm.
And we don't notice it because we don't have access to it. So that's throughout this, you make reference to, you know, and even in the, uh, the land use one with green space and that kind of thing, you make reference to green space. Accessibility is important. I can't say that word often enough for the enjoyment of the community, community to be able to use those resources. That's my comment.
And if, uh, to go along with that, the, the map, uh, figure seven, the conservation lands map has the coastal conservation plan, uh, conservation focus areas, and that would tie into other, uh, land. Hopefully trails would connect. But that's, that's the real success is when you're able to, to make the trails connect from one community to another.
Well, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Item A, I will recuse and I will let Mr. Rose take over at this point.
Thank you. Uh, so item three A continued from September eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. Uh, Russell Emi-Kome, hopefully I pronounced that correctly, is seeking a subdivision amendment to extend the culvert on a property located at fifty-nine Milo Lane in the residential single-family R-one district. This is map sixty-nine lot two D nine, sub number zero six two thousand four. I'd like to invite the applicant to present.
Oh, me too. You want me to go over?
Ah, yes, probably should. Apologies, uh, if the, uh, plan director could address this item?
Yes, thank you. So this application was continued, uh, from the nine eighteen planning board meeting, um, for the following reasons. For the Director of Public Works to review and provide input on the submitted cross-section design. Um, applicant information, applicant is requesting to extend the existing twelve-inch diameter culvert under the driveway and additional, uh, sixty feet adding backfill and grass over the culvert. This law is in, is within the Cottonwood subdivision that was approved back in two thousand four. This subdivision was designed with an open drainage system and subject to the following conditions of approval. There shall be a covenant in the deeds that states the homeowner can't fill in the roadside ditches. The application was reviewed back in September at the SRTC. At this meeting, it was recommended that the applicant provide a cross-section design, construction detail, um, submitted by an engineer. It was also noted that if approved, the existing water shut-off can't be covered with the proposed improvement. Planning just cautions the board in granting this request for drainage improvements for the precedent it will set and the potential for the overall parcels within the subdivisions to fill in drainage ditches. That was part of the overall subdivision plan.
Thank you, Director Perez. Uh, now if the applicant would like to present?
So, um, I received a phone call today from Mike from Public Works. He suggested I get a, an engineer to draw. And I said, mentioned at the time, it's Mike, it's four thousand dollars. I don't have that kind of money. I was under the impression that the basic design I drew for what I wanted to do was accepted. It just needed someone to walk the property to see exactly what I'm doing. He said, well, it's not, it's recommended, it's not suggested. It's up to the board to make the decision for you to continue what you're doing. I suggested that because I have concerns about other people living in the, in the area that might want to do the same thing that you want to do. I said, well, my concern is this, my front yard is so short, most of the houses in the development don't have a short front as like mine. If my front yard was longer, I wouldn't be here. It's just a very short drop and I'm just trying to make it a little safer and easier to cut the grass and, you know, I'm looking, I'm not building anything on top of it. I'm just putting dirt and extend pipe. The pipe is already under the driveway. It sticks out a couple of feet. I'm just kind of run it across the front a little more and cover it over. I'm not looking for, uh, any problems with anybody. I just want to do the right thing, but also make it safe at the same time. And it's, like I said, it's dirt. It's not, I'm not building a structure over it. And I was asked to find out what a, what a shut-off was and it came out two months ago. It's up on the incline of the grass, not anywhere near the culvert. It's already marked, so I'm in the safe zone there. If there was issues there, I would, I wouldn't waste anyone's time. I would just move on. Like I said, I'm just trying to make it easier. My grandkids come over a lot. You know, they're going to grow up someday, but in the meantime, I want it to be safe as also, you know, for me and the grandkids. And that's really all I'm asking for. It's all my expense. I'm not asking for neighbors to chip in. It's all my doing, no one else.
All right. Uh, in that case, I'd like to invite anyone from the public who'd like to comment to, uh, do so. So opening the public hearing. Okay. Seeing, uh, no one from the public to comment, I'll close the public hearing and open up for questions from the board.
I, I did have, um.
Did you have a comment from the public?
Yes, I did have a comment from the public.
Thank you.
Uh, so we received some correspondence from, uh, Jason LaPere. Good morning, Anna. Please include these comments, photos in the packet for the upcoming planning board meeting on September eighteenth. Dear Planning Board, in regards to the proposal for Mr. Omnikon to add sixty feet of pipe from the exit point of his driveway culvert to the entrance of the drainage swale ditch area that happens to run peril to my entire low-lying driveway property, I have the following concerns and questions regarding the modification of the property. He states he wants to extend the twelve-inch water runoff pipe around sixty to seventy feet from his driveway culvert to the side of the drainage ditch. Doing this will create a direct flow of potentially forceful and rapid runoff into the swale ditch with no opportunity for the land to absorb the water naturally over that distance as is the current setup throughout the entire neighborhood. Doing what he has proposed could overwhelm the drainage swell as was originally designed and could potentially cause flooding issues on my property, including into my garage and basement. I get runoff into the swell area, uh, from both sides of the street uphill and horizontally from the opposite direction, all funneling through the concrete culvert underneath the main road. There is also a primary transformer that sits low in the ditch between, uh, two driveway culverts across the street from me that can occasionally be prone to water rise during winter frozen precipitation and rain events. The first three photos below are taken from my driveway looking uphill. Uh, the property is directly adjacent to my driveway wetland area in the photos. Uh, number two, with a normal storm rainfall of approximately one inch or so, water runoff enters the swell area beside my property line and driveway, which only sits at the elevation of approximately one to maybe two feet at high point above the bottom of the swell area. The final, uh, two photos below are from November, uh, twenty twenty-three after a normal rainfall. The red swirl I marked up in the photo is approximate location of where the proposed pipe would exit into the side of the ditch area. If the proposed modifications to the piping drainage is approved, can that guarantee that my property home won't be susceptible to additional water rise from severe rainfall along the property line? The city is, the city required the builder to design this neighborhood with specific surface water management features to help avoid potential drainage problems. Three, also adding and burying this long pipe will likely get clogged with leaves and debris from runoff coming downhill over time. And as a result, the main road may flood due to the pipe blockage and water accumulating on the other side of the driveway. Frozen precipitation during the winter months will almost certainly block that entire length proposed pipe from draining my, any rainfall until a complete thaw cycle occurs. Did Mr. Height of Civil Works New England perform any onsite survey or valuation for this proposed minor field modification of the slope uphill of the property? Determine how a severe runoff event would affect the drainage swell next to my property? And there was also additional correspondence. Good morning, Anna. In regards to the cross-section sketch, I have additional comments from the planning board for the October sixteenth meeting provided below. The sketch is definitely lacking detail, no elevations, slopes or pavement or gravel material called out. The sketch appears to have been stamped as received by administrator, but no professional engineer stamp. For an amendment to be planned out, finished subdivision, this proposed field modification should get PE approval, usually only see field requests for active construction. This request should get more than a field amendment, in my opinion. The engineer should rerun the stormwater model and calculations to compare what was approved in twenty twenty-four or two thousand four with what is being proposed now. The flow of water coming out of the twelve-inch open end downhill pipe directly besides where the water is runoff, uh, is flowing under the main road culvert poses a serious risk of potentially overwhelming the swell and causing drainage backups at the road culvert. The city must have a file on the subdivision and knows of who did a review of the original approval. Was Civil Works New England even involved with the original subdivision approval? And that's it.
Thank you, Director. Uh, comments from the board? Mr. Rose?
Thank you. I quickly referred back to the minutes of our last meeting as to why we continued this, uh, applicant to this meeting. And it was to seek, uh, more detailed feedback from the Director of Public Works and engineering staff, which we got. And in that memo that was dated October eleventh from, uh, Mike Babinski, uh, Director of Public Works, uh, the recommendation, if you read through it, is that they couldn't make a recommendation because they lack any of the engineering data as to how this filling of land of the drainage swell would affect, you know, sheet flow off of the, the roadway. So we continued this because we wanted information from the Public Works Director. We've gotten that. Uh, they can't support it because it needs the engineering data. We've had correspondence here tonight, which alludes to engineering data. Uh, I will say that I did drive up Milo Lane and looked at the, the subject property and would agree, your front yard is short, steep, and there's no question that filling that drainage swell would improve the front yard. I, I can't argue that. But what I can't emphatically say is what effect, if any, it would have on the sheet flow off of the roadway, whether or not it would enhance water flow to adjacent properties, may or may not, right? I just, I, I don't know.
The thing is minimal water comes out of that pipe and where, and the pipe probably from me past the window before it hits the swell.
And, and again, I think, you know, it's probably minimal water now. It may be minimal water if he extends this, you know, the, the length that he wants, but we just don't know, right? Because some of that sheet flow off the road is being absorbed into the ground, uh, in that drainage swell. So as much as I think it would enhance his property, uh, I, I'm, I'm struggling to be able to support this just because of the, the, the need for some of that engineering data. And I get that. We don't want to spend the money on that. This, you know, looking for a simple fix, I get it, but just not sure I'm there.
And there's still enough grass for the rainwater to absorb, I mean, on the front lawn. Like I said, there's still a long distance from where the swell is. It's not like the pipe ends at the swell. It's back pretty far. You know, you, the whole length across the front is probably a hundred feet.
Mr. Barrett, thank you. Um, so I completely echo, um, what Council Wytham is speaking to. I can tell you, I, I used to practice civil engineering. I used to design subdivisions and drainage systems and I can tell you, um, it might, it might not look like there's a problem, but there very well could be. Remember, it's all the land that's up that's draining through. It's not just your property, it's what's coming from up the street, right?
I understand.
All that water accumulates. But what you're also not thinking of, engineering, engineers plan for major rain events. So we're not talking about what we got last weekend. We're talking about, you know, the big rainstorms that are, you, I don't know if you've ever heard of ten-year storms, twenty-five-year storms, hundred-year storms. Not that long ago, we got hit with two back-to-back one-hundred-year storms that almost knocked out our dams, okay? The whole, this is a flood zone not that long ago. So we're, engineers design the site to prepare for what's going to happen in your area. And it might not look bad to you, but it could have catastrophic consequences downstream. Now, that, that neighbor that spoke in the correspondence, there could be some, some legitimate problems there, right? There's a transformer. That, that's a big risk. You can't have water near electrical components. Um, for me, maybe being a little bit less, you know, dire and doom and gloom than, than that, uh, dam breaking bit, um, yes, you make a point that, you know, right now you have grass. Water will flow slower over grass.
Mm-hmm.
True. Um, but if you put a pipe there, it's going to, it's going to concentrate, it's going to, it's the same amount of water, but there's nothing slowing it down. So on the backside of that pipe, it's going to erode, right? That swell could fail. Um, it could knock out the swell, could go right over the swell. So another thing that we ask engineers to do is design riprap, right? They need to reinforce, they need to grade. There's a lot of things that go into it. So I know you have good intentions, but for me, as, as an engineer, having practiced as an engineer, I, I'm all for engineering and having a PE stamp. I know it seems ridiculous, but it's the right thing to do.
Plus the swell is, when you drops down, it drops down nine feet. It's not like it's a foot above the ground and as far as its power, all the houses all have underground wiring. We all have our, you know, outside. So, and the development is built in oh-four, so if there was an issue of rain or snow, it would, something would have happened by now. And all the people that lived there have been there since the houses were built. I'm one of the newest ones that moved in. I mean, like I said, I'm not looking to create an issue or have a problem, but I don't know what to say at this point. I really don't.
What I would add here is, I, I think there's been multiple good points raised around the potential risks. When this subdivision was designed and built about twenty years ago, it was designed with an open drainage system. And we don't, or I haven't seen too many, uh, subdivisions come in with that sort of system in place in the time that I've been on the planning board. There must be a reason for that. It's either a consequence of the topography of how things are structured out there, the soils, something there, or it was just more common there. Regardless of the source of that, this subdivision was designed with open drainage systems in mind. Um, and. And we also have in place covenants apparently on the deeds associated with this subdivision that require those open drainage systems be maintained. So, if we were to permit you to do what you're asking here without fully engineered work to determine that it doesn't create a problem, we do open the door to your neighbors doing the same and potentially compounding issues that are there. We also essentially override an engineering decision that was made 20 years ago and has worked. So, I have significant concerns about this without a professional engineer looking at it. And I know it doesn't seem like a lot, but small changes to these drainage systems can have major impacts. I grew up as in, in my early childhood in a major flooding area and lived in a riverfront apartment. I've seen what happens in 100-year storms with existing conditions. And if we alter them from what they were designed for, we increase the risk. I can't say whether this is a good idea or a bad idea. The fact that I can't say it's a good idea leads me to not want to move ahead with it without an engineer saying it's a good idea.
Can I hear something? Back in July, Steve Height came out to my property and walked the property completely. His suggestion was to set 60 feet, not 70 to 80. That is a problem. Same thing with back along the fence, stay without, stay within the buffer of the wetlands when we first met the first time back in May. So, I pulled out the permit for the wetland buffer and stayed before the buffer at 38 feet. And Steve Height said, "Look, Russ, if you travel that pipe to the swell, you're going to have a problem. They're going to shut you down right away." He even wrote a letter and signed it of his suggestions of this should be okay. If they need some drawings or something, they'll let you know. So, I drew a basic, basic, you know, because there's no guarantee that you would allow it, even if I spent the $4,000, you could shut it down. I'm at $4,000. So, if I was going to spend the money and guarantee it, I would borrow the money. But there's no guarantee that you allow it. The neighbor to the right of me, he has his own problems. I'm not looking to start problems with anyone. He has his major issues, he doesn't associate with anyone. That's his issue. Try to be friendly with everybody. Not here to start an argument, I'm not here to put anyone down. Again, I'm just trying to make things right.
Any other comments from the board? Mr. Horton?
I'll just add that, you know, my comments really reflect here what's already been said. We really got to follow, I'm going to follow the guidance of the DPW Director and as well as the concerns raised by the abboter. It's hard to, I can't in good faith make a decision in favor of the application without an engineered drawing, kind of outlining contours, drainage analysis, all those stuff. And for those reasons, I won't be in favor of accepting the application as complete.
Mr. Richardson?
Yeah, I agree with what's all been said, especially with just what Mr. Horton said. To me, if there has not been any problem with the 2,500-year storm area, that means the system that there is working. And without the kind of information that an engineer can provide us, I'm not in favor of it.
Mr. Wharton?
Just procedurally, I think we have two components. One is the application acceptance. That wasn't done at the last meeting. We do have now a sketch for lack of a better way, but I don't think that that is what we're looking for. We're hearing about engineering. So, I'm just going to cut to the chase that I do not find that the, I'd move that the planning board does not find the application complete for review due to lack of engineering information.
We have a motion to not accept the application as complete. Mr. Richardson, seconds. All those in favor of the motion? Mr. Wharton, opposed?
And then I'd further move that the request of Russell Amicon from the subdivision amendment to extend a culvert to property at 15, in front of 59 Milo Lane be denied because of the lack of engineering information and the lack of the application engineering information.
Motion to deny for Mr. Wharton, second to Mr. Richardson. All those in favor of the motion to deny? Adam, close. With that item complete, I'll hand the chair back over to Mr. Holley.
Mr. Chairman, with regard to Old Business B, I'll be recusing myself from this matter.
Thank you. Under Old Business, item B, continued from September 18, 2024. Hanson Corner Realty LLC is seeking a site plan amendment to make revisions to parking and other site infrastructure on a property located at 375 Route 108 in the Commercial Industrial CI District, assesses map 58 lot 05, site number 08, 2021. Director Mears, anything to add?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This application was continued from the September meeting to allow for the applicant to submit a waiver request or submit fully engineered plans to show the dimensions of the proposed site layout, storage area, and parking to be relocated. Since the last meeting, the applicant has sat down with an engineering firm, but in order to get those plans, it's 60 days out. So, the applicant is back before us to see if he can put up the fence in the area that's being proposed, remove the requirement to install the grass island along West High Street frontage, and he wants to repave the site before December. Planning does support this request as long as ASBILTS are submitted to the planning department and the engineered plans for the rest of it, the applicant will come back for a vote from the planning board on those items, showing the locations. So, the applicant is back before you tonight.
Entertainer motion to continue. Motion may be by Mr. Horton, second by Ms. Berry. Those in favor raise your right hand. Close. At this point of the, do we already vote on the application last meeting? Okay. At this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Janatus to make his presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Director, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Michelle. So, I was tasked at the last meeting to speak with an engineer, to get engineering drawings, to document the changes that I had given to you folks on a marked-up drawing, or, as the director said, request a waiver to pre-engine, approval for submitting engineering documentation. I spoke with John Shagnon, the former principal of Ambed Engineering, who's now a, I'm going to say a senior engineer for Haley Ward, who bought Ambed Engineering between now and 2021 when the site plan was created. He is absolutely swamped. He said, "There's not a chance I'm going to be able to get to creating documentations showing what you want to do within the next 60 days." So, with that, because of that, that's why I'm requesting a waiver on the engineering plans, which obviously in the last meeting, you guys requested that I provide. I'm still asking for that, I'm still requesting that waiver, possibly with a additional requirement that I do have the documentation, the engineered plans updated and submitted by a date for the record. So, that's where we are at this point. As far as other things that have been, that we're working on, we have a quote, and we're actually proceeding with installing the ADA sidewalk as shown on the original site plan documentation. Hopefully, that's going to be framed and poured in the next couple of days, and we'll be able to get our plantings in place. That was the first thing that was required by the paving facility, to get that in place prior to paving. I've also talked with Central Fence regarding costing for two items, the equipment pen that we've requested to move from the Route 108 side of the property to the West High Street side of the property. I do have that first quote, and I'm waiting for a quote on the replacement trash area to replace the existing one. So, that's where I am. The window's obviously closing on the, on the reclaiming and paving window, and I am here to listen to, I know you have a number of motions you're trying to vote on, not sure if you're even, you're even going to get to that, but that's where I am.
Okay, thank you. Over to the public hearing. Anybody care to comment on this application? Is there any correspondence concerning this application?
None this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Seeing none, closed public hearing. Mr. Berry, questions from the board?
All right. Just a, just a point of order. Director Mears, so to make sure that we are, that I'm not confused here, so we're not going on everything that was here last month. We're only looking at specifically, correct me if I'm wrong, items A, B, C, and E. Is that correct?
That, I think, can I speak because I'm the one who told her, so you tell me who you...
Somebody tell me.
I'm a little bit, to be honest with you, I'm a little bit confused on what Raleigh's, Raleigh's requesting right now. I was under the impression that we're still going to get engineered plans based off the discussion. I didn't know there was a request for a waiver from that.
Well, that's what the, that was the result of the September meeting, one or the other.
Yeah.
I came in and said we couldn't get plans. John couldn't create plans that, so the waiver was the alternative. So, that's where I am on the waiver. As far as what I'm asking for, Jason, the nine items were part of the application, so I'm assuming they're still in the books. But the four things that I need to, to be able to pave the parking lot, the four things are the, I can't pave without doing the other, because the fences have to be, they're telling me they have to be put in, the posts have to be set prior to the paving, or else I'm going to just, you know, I can do it, carve up the $200,000 paving after the fact, which is not my first choice.
Okay. All right. So, at least in, to me, it still sounds like A, B, C, and E is what he's trying to propose. I don't feel really great about the others, but I'm willing to come to the table to talk about those four. And maybe that'll be enough to help you get where you need to go, so.
I'm curious, have you ever cherry picked an application, or is it all or nothing? Is that, is that...
Because I can tell you, for me, that's going to cause a problem personally. I'm, personally, I'm okay with working with you to say, "Okay, those parking spaces in the front of the building, okay, all right, I can work with that." If you want to do ASBILTS at the end, that's where I stand. You guys can feel how you guys want to feel.
Tell me what you mean by that statement.
So, your, your goal was to remove the parking spaces in the front of the building, correct?
To, to...
Right in front of the showroom?
To add them.
You wanted to add them.
Right. Right now, there's two handicaps, and it seemed like it made sense to create the parking across the front of the, entire front of the showroom, which is what I've showed in the drawing. I believe there'll be four additional non-handicapped spots. There might be a fifth one, but I think four is plus the two handicaps.
And you have handicap now?
There's going to be two.
There's two, okay.
They do not exist yet.
Understood. You know, as far as the green space, personally, I don't have a problem with the green space. It's already disrupted. Personally, I don't have a problem talking about that one.
Currently, the green safe, that area is pavement, just to clarify. That's, it's an existing paved parking lot that somehow that green spot, I don't know if the board added that in, if John did it out of, you know, making something looking flowery, or if you guys demanded it. I'm not sure how that, how that all worked. That was not part of the...
I'm not sure I wasn't on the board at that time, so I can't speak to it. As far as the fences, I know the thing that was giving us all heartburn was that we didn't know where, that we didn't know where they were going to be, right? So, the big, the big problem...
We have it on the drawing.
And, and that's good. The, the big topic of the day was, you know, if we have to go after compliance, for whatever reason, we don't have something formal, we don't have XXX and X, right? We, we need to know where those posts are going to be, you know, before...
Per what, per what regulation requires that? I, you know, I don't, something is, doesn't sound right. I can't believe that...
We, we require a site plan.
Plus or minus six inches, plus or minus a yard? What are we, what are we talking about?
We need an engineering drawing. It's really that simple. So, personally, I'm willing to work with you to come back, because you're saying you're going to have your engineer draft up drawings.
Of, of...
Of your site, right? You're going to...
Of what's, of what's done.
Of what's done, okay. And that's, that's the only reason I'm speaking up, is that, that maybe collectively, we're trying to work with you, okay? Because otherwise, if we went based on the conversation last month, you'd be denied straight up, right?
Because?
Because you have no drawing.
Oh, right.
Right? So, if you have, I guess the point is, is if there's an ASBILT and the other board members are amendable to it, we might be able to do something after the work is complete as long as we come to an agreement. So, I'm willing to have those conversations with the board. So, I'll leave it at that.
Mr. Horton and Mr. Rhodes?
Sure, I'll, I'll just comment and say that I'm still, I'm not in favor of amending a site plan without engineered drawings, so I'm kind of right back to where we were last month. I really, I need to see engineered drawings and to be able to vote on it. So, that's kind of where I'm still at, and I'm not in favor of waiving, approving a waiver to mitigate that. So, I'm still where I am last month, I guess.
Well, Chris, you, you were the one who put the motion on the floor to accept it last month. Now, you're against it because you don't have...
It's, it's not up for debate.
Mr. Rhodes?
So, I like a little bit of context, having missed last month, unfortunately, but my biggest concern here, well, there's two. One is that I'm not entirely sure what I'm being asked to vote on, and we have a list A through I here. I'm a little uncomfortable carving chunks out of that and proving those, tabling or continuing others until engineering drawings come in. The other concern that I have is that we just unanimously voted to deny a homeowner putting in 60 feet of culvert because he didn't have engineering drawings. We're talking about a multiple hundred thousand dollar commercial property work here that we're contemplating allowing without engineering drawings. And I'm not comfortable with that.
Totally two different things. You have a, you have, that was a totally different situation. We have an existing property with existing requirements from the board.
That you're looking to amend.
That, based on what the planning department has told me, there's some number of those need either a waiver or an amendment.
We're looking to change an existing engineering drawing without full drawings in place and full engineering workup in place. I, I do not see the distinction apart from scale.
Absolutely. Two different situations. Absolutely two different.
Questions from the board? Now, did we vote on regional impact last time? I will entertain a motion on regional impact concerning this item. Mr. Richardson?
I move that there is no regional impact.
Motion may be by Mr. Richardson. Second. Second by Mr. Berry. Discussion. Those in favor, raise your right hand. Any other questions from the board, or any action from the board? Any action from the board?
Point of order.
Mr. Horton?
So I guess there's two paths we could go, well, there's two paths in my mind. We could go here, we could continue to date certain, to the next meeting, or we deny the application for, deny the application for not having all the required material, all the material. So I guess, those are two options. The question is, are those the two options really before, or is there anything other, anything else to add?
Director Mears?
I did speak with the applicant about repaving the site, doesn't require site plan amendment, but he would like to remove the requirement to install the grass island in the fence. But I don't know if the board wants to go forward with that. I was under the impression that the applicant was going to come back with engineered drawings after that for the rest of the items listed.
The-
Mr. Rhodes?
Just to raise a comment here to create some context, with the applicant and the board. I own a little less than an eighth of an acre in, at the bottom of the hill in Somersworth, and when I replaced my fence about four years ago, I had to submit a site plan in order to do so. It wasn't a professionally engineered one, because it was a direct replacement, but the applicant's requesting to install a new fence on the property, to amend an existing site plan, to remove a grass island, without a site plan.
It's existing.
The fence is existing?
No, the, the parking lot doesn't have this-
So you're looking to add a new fence that doesn't exist today, not even a straight replacement, you're looking to add fencing on the property?
I don't think Jeremy has a comment.
I do not.
So the original, sorry, Mr. Chairman, thank you. The original site plan, they were actually supposed to cut out pavement as part of some redevelopment plan. And that's part of the reason why the application is back before us, because we're, the site is not in compliance with the original approved site plan back in 2021.
So we have a case where approximately three years after the site plan was approved, they're not in compliance, and you're looking to amend that site plan to do something different today?
Correct.
I would encourage the applicant to bring their site into compliance with the already approved plan. I said I would encourage the applicant to bring their site into compliance with the already approved plan, or to submit an amended plan for full consideration.
If you want to speak into the mic, please.
So in lieu of what, that's a far cry from the result of September's meeting. The September's meeting was provide an engineering plan or ask for a waiver from providing engineered documentation. So how did we get to this point?
I think because this was the already approved site plan, so the board is saying that they're not going to probably grant the waiver for engineered plans. So in order to come back for a site plan amendment, you need to have engineered plans for the board to review.
So what happens between now and next summer, when we have the next window where we can proceed with coming into compliance? Do I go to jail? Do I start getting fined thousands of dollars? Do, what can I get a feel for what may occur in the meantime? Because, because, you know, the compliance is not going to happen this year.
Yeah, so I will work with Shane about the code compliance issues. You are, we have been trying to get this site back into compliance, and we have been meeting with you, as you know, and we have not pursued going after the fees at this point, because you have been working with planning staff. So at this point, that's a discussion between Shane and I, and that's not a board discussion.
I have a motion. Mr. Horton?
Thank you. I moved at the request of Hanson Corner Realty LLC for site plan amendment to make revisions to parking and other site infrastructure on a property located at 375 Route 108, Site 08-Tech 2021, being denied for the lack of engineered drawings.
Motion made by Mr. Horton, seconded by Mr. Rhodes. Discussion. Those in favor, raise your right hand. Close? Motion passes.
Since this is a public meeting, may I ask, why would a board member recuse himself from a discussion on the agenda? What might be the outside influence that caused that?
No idea.
Just curious. Okay. Appreciate the help.
You're welcome. Any other old business before the board? Director Mears?
None this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Next item is, item five, new business, item A, Michael Davis is seeking an extension request of an approved plan for conditional use permit approval for after-the-fact excavation and alterations within the riparian and wetland buffer on a property located at 25 Otis Road, residential single-family R1 district, assesses map 31 lot 49, CUP number 032023. Director Mears?
Yes, so the applicant is seeking an extension of 120-day period to address the conditions that must be met prior to the final approval. The final plan shall bear the stamp and signature of a New Hampshire licensed land surveyor, and a final wetlands restoration plan shall bear the stamp and signature of a New Hampshire licensed wetland scientist. Federal and state permits, all federal and state permits shall be in place before signing and recording, including New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services Wetlands Permit. The applicant is requesting a five-month extension to file and receive approval from New Hampshire DES for after-the-fact wetlands permit. This would allow for the applicant until April 7, 2025, to submit final plans and state permits to the planning office.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to invite the representative of Michael Davis to state the name and address, and please, or your affiliation.
Good evening.
And please make a presentation.
Good evening, board, and thank you for your time. My name is Marsha Brown with NH Brown Law, and Michael Davis retained me to represent him in this matter, which has a long history of trying to get him into compliance. And since my involvement early, early 2024, you know, we've reassembled the engineer, the wetland scientist. We got a restoration plan, which was expensive to obtain, but we got that plan and got approval for the preliminary approval of the conditional use permit. And part of that permit requires within 120 days to come back with an approved DES permit. The problem was this summer, do, well, I don't know if, in your packet, do you have the email from the wetland scientist explaining the delay? Okay, so Mr. Davis was unable to pay a invoice timely and stay in the queue. And because, well, we retain, we reassembled the team with Mark Jacobs, because he had familiarity with, with the area. He is also a sole proprietor, which makes him cost-effective. But being a sole proprietor, it's not like he has other staff that he, when he has a logjam of work that he can delegate to. So having fallen out of the queue and trying to get back into the workflow, in speaking with Mark Jacobs and asking him, how much time do you need? Was able to get a commitment from him, knowing that the wild card is DES's turnaround time, but because he has a lot of applications with this particular reviewer, he kind of knows what the workflow is, thinks that five months should be enough for him to get the application in for December and have it reviewed and get back. My problem with that timeline is, I need my 120 days to accomplish getting the DES approval expires in November. And so I'm asking that, for a five-month extension of that 120 days, so that we have until April 7 to submit the DES approval.
Thank you. See a public hearing on this item? This time, open to a public hearing. Anybody care to comment on this application? Any correspondence concerning this application? Seeing none, closed public hearing? Entertained questions in the board? Mr. Rhodes?
Just so I'm clear on the dates here, the request is until April 7 to come back with the approvals from DES, or to submit the plans to DES?
That is not to submit the plans. That is, the conditional approval expires on November, November 7. I'd like the conditional approval to get all of the prerequisites done, to expire on April 7, if that's clear.
So Mr. Jacobs intends to submit the plans this December to have returned from DES in April, so that work can commence in the spring.
Correct.
Which I think was the timeline that we kind of expected work to happen anyway.
We're hoping to meet the spring, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions in the board? Mr. Witham?
Yeah, oddly enough, I do think the timing of this going into winter just quite frankly makes sense. The work would likely happen in the spring, so there's that, right? So I think I can work with this, given where we are in the time of year.
Mr. Richardson?
Yeah, I agree. This, for however long this has been going on, another five months is not going to change it one way or another. I might just comment, though, that our meeting in April would, if it's traditionally on the third Wednesday, would be the 16th. So I'd even go till the 16th for-
Any further comments?
Just the wording that would say our April meeting.
Mr. Rhodes?
Picking back on a couple of comments about five months not making a substantive difference here, if I can speak tonight. I'd agree with that, however, eight months, 10 months would, so I would request that you impress upon your client the importance of keeping to this schedule.
Mr. Witham?
Yeah, just to pick you back on Mr. Rhodes, I agree. We don't want this to drag on more than it really needs to. As the council representative to the planning board, I can just share that the property has raised the ire of many residents. It's caused many of a phone call and email. So I'm glad we're at least at a stage where we have a plan. There appears to be a, I won't call it a goal line, I'll call it a starting line in sight in the spring. So I am cautiously optimistic that we can get there.
Any further comments in the board? Anybody have a motion? Mr. Rhodes?
I'll make a motion that the request of Michael Davis for a five-month extension of the planning board conditional approval for the after-the-fact conditional use permit to complete conditions prior to final approval be approved, noting that the date expected is the April planning board meeting as scheduled.
Motion made by Mr. Rhodes. Seconded by Mr. Witham. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your right hand. Close? Motion passes.
Thank you for your time.
Item B under new business, Rand Development LLC is seeking minor subdivision approval for a two-lot subdivision on a property located at Old Rochester Road, a residential single-family R1 district. Assesses map 67, Lot 5F, sub number 052024. Director Mears, anything to add?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicant is seeking to subdivide an existing 1.88 acre parcel to two lots. The lots are proposed to be serviced by City Water and Onsite Septic. There is a noted wetland shown on Lot F, oh, Lot 5F1. A conditional use permit would be required for structures located within 150 feet of the wetland. The applicant has said that they do not intend to disturb the wetlands buffer. The application was reviewed by the SRTC at the October 2 meeting. This lot complies with all zoning, and this is ready for the board to take action, except as complete.
Application is ready for acceptance, okay. Entertained a motion for application. Mr. Witham?
Move that it is complete for review.
Motion made by Mr. Witham, seconded by Mr. Horton. Discussion. Those in favor, raise your right hand. Close? This time, I'd like to invite Ms. Stoll to make his presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. Bob Stoll at Tri-Tech Engineering, Dover, New Hampshire. This is a lot that Rand Development owns. We originally did the subdivision for Rand Development back in, in 1999, mere 25 years ago. And this lot was created, at the time, it was in the R2 district. So it was set up as, you can see the abut at 5G, was developed as a duplex. But more recently, this area had changed to the R1 district. So the lot ended up being oversized for the, for the R1 district. So we proceeded with a subdivision complying with the R1 regulations. It is serviced by City Water. We have done our soils work, our test pits, and received NHDES subdivision approval. It is on Route 16B, Old Rochester Road. Therefore, the driveway permits require DOT approval, which we have received from District 6. And we hope everything's in order this evening, so we can receive approval here and we can get moving forward with this project. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Open to a public hearing. Anybody care to comment on this application? Any correspondence, Director Mears?
None this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Seeing none, closed public hearing? Questions in the board? Okay, entertained a motion on regional impact. Mr. Witham?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd move that the project does not have any opportunity for regional impact.
Motion made by Mr. Witham, seconded by Mr. Richardson. Discussion. Those in favor, raise your right hand. Close? At this time, I'd like to ask the director to review conditions of approval.
Yes, thank you. Plan revision, property markers along the front property line to be set, shall be set with granite bounds. Please revise S2 landscape note L1-2 to update subdivision section 7, Roman number 8, 3A, BE. Revise the water line information to 12-inch. Conditions that must be met prior to final approval. The final plan shall bear the stamp and signature of a licensed land surveyor. Please submit four copies to the planning office and a PDF copy. Monumentation granite bound shall be installed at all intersections of the lot lines and street right-of-way, as well as the property corners, which do not abut the public right-of-way, per subdivision regulation 227C10. A surveyor is to submit a signed letter to the planning department stating that the new lot corner monuments have been set prior to recording of the subdivision. Conditions to be completed prior to the start of work. Future proposed development streets, structures, uses, activities, and disturbances, and changes in use within the wetlands buffer shall require a conditional use permit, as described in Chapter 19, Section 13, Riparian and Wetland Buffer District Ordinance. All new service connections from the utility overhead line shall be installed underground. The applicant shall apply for a new water and sewer connection, or water connection permit. The applicant will be required to pay standard water connection fees assessed on new properties connecting to the water system. The development will require new addresses. Please submit a request for a new address to the city engineer. If a hearing before the E911 committee is required, this hearing must occur prior to the issuance of building permit. Per Section 19, 23E9, the building shall display the designated address number in such a manner as to be plainly visible from the street which it abuts the main entrance to the property. Such number shall be a minimum of 3.5 inches in height and must be reflective. The applicant shall obtain all applicable permits through the Department of Public Works or New Hampshire DOT as applicable. This shall include, but not limited to, driveway permits and trench permits. Erosion control is required to be installed prior to the start of work. Erosion control shall be maintained throughout construction. Any breaks or breaches shall be repaired within 48 hours. Conditions applicable during and after construction, backflow devices shall be installed prior- Backflow devices shall be installed prior to the certificate of occupancy. All new subdivision lots shall be required to have a foundation certificate survey prior to the issuance of certificate of occupancy. There shall be no wetlands degradation during construction. The new proposed lot once developed shall have a minimum of two trees, not less than two inches in caliper in the front yard. These trees may be retained from the existing onsite trees or new plantings prior to the issuance of certificate of occupancy.
All of a sudden?
Yes.
Thank you, Director Mears. Mr. Witham?
Yes, I'd move that the request of Rand Development LLC for a minor subdivision of Assessors Map 67 Lot 5F for two-lot subdivision be approved with the conditions as outlined by the planner this evening.
Motion made by Mr. Witham, seconded by Mr. Rhodes. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your right hand. Close. Motion passes. Subdivision's approved.
Thank you, everyone.
Director Mears, any new business that may come before the board this evening?
None this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Is there any workshop business?
None this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Communications miscellaneous. Mr. Witham?
Yes, thank you. There was a question asked of Mr. Janados as to why I recuse myself. I just feel somewhat obligated to speak to that. Quite frankly, I just didn't feel that I could be objective in this particular case. I've done quite a bit of business with Patriot Tractor, the occupant of the property, both personally and through my involvement with local baseball, and it was just a perceived conflict that I had with it. I didn't think I could be objective enough with it, so hence why I stepped away, both last meeting and this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Witham. Any other communications miscellaneous? Director Mears?
We are still looking for a member of the planning board to sit on the site review technical committee meetings, if anybody is interested. When Paul Robitus stepped down on the planning board, that role has not been filled at this point, so.
So it couldn't really open any of the planning board members?
Yes, and it's on Wednesdays, it's the first and third Wednesday of the month, first and second, and it is at 10:00 a.m., which is a hard time for planning board members, but.
Is there any candidates for his position? Planning board position?
I haven't seen any yet.
Okay. Any other communication miscellaneous? Mr. Horton?
Thank you. Just looking to see if maybe for the next meeting, we could get an update on the Maple Street Gas, wow, what's the word I'm looking for? The gas mains that were, yeah, gas substation, if we could get an update on that. I know part of the conditions of approval were to remove the existing gas field that was on the corner of Bartlett Street upon completing the infrastructure, so just looking to kinda get an update on that, maybe for next meeting. Appreciate it, thanks.
Any other? Mr. Berry?
Okay, so, something I wanna chat about. I admit myself frustrated, to be honest, after the business last month. I was concerned with the application that was Brent Ford. I didn't feel good when I left the meeting. I feel even worse tonight, to be perfectly frank with you. Somebody once told me that the road to hell is paved in good intentions, right? And I found myself two months in a row lowering my standards for something I knew to be wrong, right? We wouldn't let anybody else do a project without having a site plan in front of us. The fact that we let that conversation go is, honestly, it's not okay. Personally, I'm gonna make a statement. I would like planning before a project comes before us to ensure that the drawings are there and that they're present, and if they're not, we need to deny that project. We need to say it's not okay, because we shouldn't be in this position. It makes us not look good. We came off poorly to the applicant two months in a row. So I'm just gonna let you know, that's the stance I'm gonna be taking moving forward, so, yeah, that's how I feel. Thank you.
Any other communications miscellaneous? Entertained a motion to adjourn?
I move.
Motion made by Mr. Horton, seconded by Mr. Richardson. Those in favor, raise your right hand. Close. Thank you very much.